Absent Brendan Gill, absent Romaine Graham.
Here.
Rufus Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano.
Here.
Commissioner Mercado, absent. Commissioner Sebo.
Yeah.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarés, absent. And Commissioner President Richardson, absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have before me certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. I want to say thank you to the staff in the Commissioner's office for organizing this and correlating it with the staff from the administration. Those of you that are on from the Parks Department and those of you that are on representing the administration and the commissioners as a consultant for our deer management program. Overview, I will tell you that I've been the Chair of this deer committee for eight out of the last 10 years since I began as a freeholder and now commissioner. I think there was a two-year period where I didn't sit as the Chair, but it was awarded back to me. I know that I want to put on record that last year, due to COVID and some other reasonings, we did not have the deer management hunt, which I'm sure will be given an overview on by the administration, the Parks Department, and our deer management consultant. And I also want to thank my colleagues, freeholder or commissioner Patricia Sebold and Romaine Graham, for spending time out of the middle of their day in the middle of the summer to join in this, which I find to be a much-needed dialogue and discussion and just see where we're at with this program, where we plan on going with it, and what alternatives we may have other than what we already know. Lastly, I want to thank any members of the public that are on, and I will say that I will give everyone and anyone, whether it's my colleagues, anyone representing the administration, or any members of the public, an opportunity during this committee meeting to be heard and to speak. So for everyone, just be patient and let me know if you would like to speak. I think the first topic of discussion will be turned over to Robert Jackson or Jay Coltry, and you can take over from here and let the administration sort of give us an overview as to where we're at, how many years we've been doing this program, and where we plan on going in the near, middle, and far future. Thank you.
I think Robert's having some audio difficulties. Give me one second. Okay, apologize for that, Mr. Chairman. I'll speak for Robert at the moment. I'm Matthew Doolittle from the County Administrator's Office. With us today, we have Daniel Bernier, who's our deer management consultant. I'll hand it over to him in a minute to give an overview and a little historical perspective. We also have Joshua Zech and Kate Hartwell from the Parks Department. So Dan, good afternoon. I'll hand it over to you. Thank you.
Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners and members of the administration. The Essex County Deer Management Program has been underway in South Mountain Reservation since 2008. It was expanded later to Hilltop Reservation and Eagle Rock, and has continued in South Mountain and Hilltop for several years. Eagle Rock, not in the last few years. As Commissioner Luciano already mentioned, we did not have a program last year because of COVID. Obviously, that has set things a little bit behind because the deer did not know that we were not out there, and they continued to reproduce. So their numbers got a bit of an upswing last year. We did do something new this year. The administration contracted with the Raritan Valley Community College to conduct deer population surveys of three parks, South Mountain, Eagle Rock, and Hilltop, using infrared photography with a camera mounted under a drone. It is kind of the up-and-coming technology for deer surveying. We've been doing spotlight counting of deer since 2010, where three or four individuals, myself directing, drive throughout the parks in the dark and shine spotlights and look for deer. And when we see the reflection in their eyes, we plot in on a map where we see them. And at the end of the night, I apply some formulas that extrapolate the number of deer that we saw against the total area of the park to include the areas that we couldn't access with spotlighting. As crude as it sounds, it actually was pretty much the standard in deer biology for conducting population surveys until just recently. But now with the availability of drones, and not just drones, but drones that can carry some very sophisticated cameras, we now have the ability to do it from the air. It is still conducted at night in the dark so that you get the best contrast in temperature between the deer and the land behind them. And Raritan Valley Community College got into the business of doing this three years ago, not as a means of making money, not as a means of having fun with drones. They are in it solely because they are very concerned about the health of the hardwood forests of New Jersey and the Northeast in general. And they have studied for a long time. The director of the unit at Raritan Valley Community College that conducts the surveys is Dr. Jay Kelly. And for a long time, he's been doing surveys of plots of forests throughout New Jersey, in healthy forests and unhealthy forests, and he's been comparing the results of his studies to that of researchers going all the way back, I believe, to the 1950s and finding the trends, and unfortunately, they're not good trends, in terms of the health of the forest as it's being degraded. And his work is primarily trying to show the correlation between the degradation of forest health against the increase in deer population size. So he has made this technology available to us and to others. He was able to offer it to us at a discount because he received a grant, so he was able to reduce his costs. He operates with a very small crew, but gets results. They spent three nights over South Mountain Reservation and the night over Hilltop and Eagle Rock. As you can imagine, you're up in the air. I think they were generally at about 700 to 1,000 feet. They were able to look down and see 100% of the ground surface as opposed to what we could see from a car with a spotlight. And they also have the ability to go beyond the borders of the park because, as those of you primarily who are elected officials know from the phone calls you get from your constituents, the deer don't respect the park boundaries. They don't just get to the park border and stop. They tend to spend a lot of time out in the neighborhoods that surround their parks, either laying down in people's yards or eating the landscape around their houses. So with the drone technology, they're now able to very quietly move out over those neighborhoods. They expanded the limits of the study. I think it was 300 meters in every direction around each park and therefore count a larger portion of the population. And that's very important because when the counts are being done in the evening and in the middle of the night, that's when the deer that would be in any of our parks during the daytime are out in the neighborhoods. So in order to get the truest count of the population size, you've got to be able to see those deer. They also, with their technology, are able to, as they go back and analyze the data, they're able to plot the locations of deer or groups of deer and then to do something called kernel analysis. That's kernel, like popcorn kernel, where they're able to show how the densities differ from area to area, and that's something we did not achieve with our spotlight counting. The end result of all of that is that their aerial counts show that, as we would have expected, our deer populations are not down, they are up, and that our spotlight counting was somewhat undercounting them, and as I said, was not able to count certain areas and judge the differences between residential areas and park areas. So now we have a much more accurate count. Using their results and then factoring in some formulas that will take into account new births that occurred this year after the aerial counts, as well as the average mortality that occurs from just old age or from automobile accidents, we're able to estimate what is typically referred to as the overwintering population of deer. Quite simply, how many deer do we think will be in our parks next winter at the time that we would be conducting a deer management program? The results of that show that in South Mountain, the overwintering population probably will be about 145 deer, which is 25 deer per square mile. When we first started deer management in Essex County, we were basing our goals on the standard among forest ecologists of that time that said that a healthy forest can maintain 20 deer per square mile, and unhealthy forest might have to be reduced to as low as five per square mile. Dr. Kelly and a number of his academic colleagues in the field of forest ecology throughout the state of New Jersey now have the results of a lot of different studies to cause them to believe that the target should be 10 per square mile. 20 is just not achievable, is not ever going to get us back to having a healthy forest. Five is probably, five deer per square mile is probably lower than ever could be physically achieved. 10 is a number that is practical to achieve and would provide for forest regeneration to get our forests back to the health that they should be in. So with 10 per square mile as our goal, we see that South Mountain Reservation is going to be at 25, so certainly significantly more than it should be. Eagle Rock Reservation is probably in the neighborhood of 36 per square mile. The Hilltop Reservation, which has long been a source of a very high population in a relatively small area with great impacts on the communities around it, the overwintering density is expected to be 108 per square mile or a total of about 179 deer in an area that should support 17. Based on those numbers, I have prepared an application to the New Jersey Division of Fish and Wildlife for a community-based deer management plan.
Okay, apologize for that, Mr. Chairman. I'll speak for Robert at the moment. I'm Matthew Dooley from the County Administrator's Office. With us today, we have Daniel Bernier, who's our deer management consultant. I'll hand it over to him in a minute to give an overview and a little historical perspective. We also have Joshua Zech and Kate Hartwell from the Parks Department. So, Dan, good afternoon, I'll hand it over to you, thank you.
Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners and members of the Administration. The Essex County Deer Management Program has been underway in South Mountain Reservation since 2008. It was expanded later to Hilltop Reservation and Eagle Rock, and has continued in South Mountain and Hilltop for several years. Eagle Rock, not in the last few years. As Commissioner Luciano already mentioned, we did not have a program last year because of COVID. Obviously, that has set things a little bit behind because the deer did not know that we were not out there, and they continued to reproduce. So their numbers got a bit of an upswing last year. We did do something new this year. We, the Administration contracted with the Raritan Valley Community College to conduct deer population surveys of three parks, South Mountain, Eagle Rock, and Hilltop, using infrared photography with a camera mounted under a drone. It is kind of the up-and-coming technology for deer surveying. We've been doing spotlight counting of deer since 2010, where three or four individuals, myself directing, drive throughout the parks in the dark and shine spotlights and look for deer. And when we see the reflection in their eyes, we plot in on a map where we see them. And at the end of the night, I apply some formulas that extrapolate the number of deer that we saw against the total area of the park, to include the areas that we couldn't access with spotlighting. As crude as it sounds, it actually was pretty much the standard in deer biology for conducting population surveys until just recently. But now with the availability of drones, and not just drones, but drones that can carry some very sophisticated cameras, we now have the ability to do it from the air. It is still conducted at night in the dark so that you get the best contrast in temperature between the deer and the land behind them. And Raritan Valley Community College got into the business of doing this three years ago, not as a means of making money, not as a means of having fun with drones. They are in it solely because they are very concerned about the health of the hardwood forests of New Jersey and the Northeast in general. And they have studied for a long time, the director of the the unit at Raritan Valley Community College that conducts the surveys is Dr. Jay Kelly. And for a long time, he's been doing surveys of plots of forests throughout New Jersey, in healthy forests and unhealthy forests. And he's been comparing the results of his studies to that of researchers going all the way back, I believe, to the 1950s, and finding the trends, and unfortunately, they're not good trends, in terms of the health of the forest as it's being degraded. And his work is primarily trying to show the correlation between the degradation of forest health against the increase in deer population size. So he has made this technology available to us and to others. He was able to offer it to us at a discount because he received a grant, so he was able to reduce his costs. He operates with a very small crew, but gets results. They spent three nights over South Mountain Reservation and the night over Hilltop and Eagle Rock. As you can imagine, you know, you're up in the air. I think they were generally at about 700 to 1,000 feet. They were able to look down and see 100% of the ground surface as opposed to what we could see from a car with a spotlight. And they also have the ability to go beyond the borders of the park because, as those of you primarily who are elected officials know from the phone calls you get from your constituents, the deer don't respect the park boundaries. They don't just get to the park border and stop. They tend to spend a lot of time out in the neighborhoods that surround their parks, either laying down in people's yards or eating the landscape around their houses. So with the drone technology, they're now able to very quietly move out over those neighborhoods. They expanded the limits of the study. I think it was 300 meters in every direction around each park, and therefore count a larger portion of the population. And that's very important because when the counts are being done in the evening and in the middle of the night, that's when the deer that would be in any of our parks during the daytime are out in the neighborhoods. So in order to get the truest count of the population size, you've got to be able to see those deer. They also, with their technology, are able to, as they go back and analyze the data, they're able to plot the locations of deer or groups of deer, and then to do something called kernel analysis. That's kernel, like popcorn kernel, where they're able to show how the densities differ from area to area. And that's something we did not achieve with our spotlight counting. The end result of all of that is that their aerial counts show that, as we would have expected, our deer populations are not down, they are up, and that our spotlight counting was somewhat undercounting them. And as I said, was not able to count certain areas and judge the differences between residential areas and park areas. So now we have a much more accurate count. Using their results and then factoring in some formulas that will take into account new births that occurred this year after the aerial counts, as well as the average mortality that occurs from just old age or from automobile accidents, we're able to estimate what is typically referred to as the overwintering population of deer. Quite simply, how many deer do we think will be in our parks next winter at the time that we would be conducting a deer management program? The results of that show that in South Mountain, the overwintering population probably will be about 145 deer, which is 25 deer per square mile. When we first started deer management in Essex County, we were basing our goals on the standard among forest ecologists of that time that said that a healthy forest can maintain 20 deer per square mile, and unhealthy forest might have to be reduced to as low as five per square mile. Dr. Kelly and a number of his academic colleagues in the field of forest ecology throughout the state of New Jersey now have the results of a lot of different studies to cause them to believe that the target should be 10 per square mile. 20 is just not achievable, is not ever going to get us back to having a healthy forest. Five is probably, five deer per square mile is probably lower than ever could be physically achieved. 10 is a number that is practical to achieve and would provide for forest regeneration, to get our forests back to the health that they should be in. So with 10 per square mile as our goal, we see that South Mountain Reservation is going to be at 25, so certainly significantly more than it should be. Eagle Rock Reservation is probably in the neighborhood of 36 per square mile. The Hilltop Reservation, which has long been a source of a very high population in a relatively small area with great impacts on the communities around it, the overwintering density is expected to be 108 per square mile, or a total of about 179 deer in an area that should support 17. Based on those numbers, I have prepared an application to the New Jersey Division of Fish and Wildlife for a community-based deer management plan, requesting them to issue a permit that would allow us to operate a 2022 Essex County Deer Management Program that is similar to what was done in 2019 and in years before it. Basically, the numbers say that we should remove about 88 deer from South Mountain and 162 deer from Hilltop Reservation. However, we know that the budget is not going to support the number of days that it would take to achieve that in one year. We know that the park visitors and the park neighbors are not going to support loss of access to the park areas or their comfort in knowing that hunters are or are not in the woods near their homes for that number of days. So our application is based on repeating the same type of program we had in 2019, where we would hunt six afternoons in South Mountain Reservation, six afternoons in Hilltop Reservation, and then at the end of the program, look at what our densities are then standing at and make recommendations for next year. I do believe that we will make some significant inroads into the numbers because we did not have a program last year. The deer are not going to be as wary as our hunters prepared to go into the woods to conduct that hunt. Our hunters that we have been using have achieved such a level of experience that they are, for the most part, much more capable and productive than the average hunter out there in New Jersey. And they do achieve some rather commendable results. And I do believe that with six afternoons of hunting at South Mountain and six at Eagle Rock, that we will have a significant reduction there. Eagle Rock is still problematic in that it is a property that is not as easy to place hunters in. And the costs of shutting that park down and conducting a hunt are difficult to balance out against the results that we might achieve. So we're not calling for hunting there yet this year, but certainly should keep it as a consideration for next year.
Dan, this is Commissioner Luciano. I don't want to cut you off and stop. I do want to be a little time-sensitive, too. And I also wanted to jump in to see if any of my colleagues on the Commissioner Board had any questions for you so far. I think what I would like to ask of you is the, some of those statistics that you are providing, if you could provide that to our clerk so that the entire Board of Commissioners can take a look at those numbers before the next time we see you. And I don't know when the next time we're going to see you is. It may be next month, it may be in a few months. But if you could get those numbers over to us in black and white. But I did want to open up the floor to Commissioner Graham or to Commissioner Sebold, if they would like to say a few words or have any particular questions before we go any further. Commissioner Sebold, you're on mute. If you could check your mute button.
Sorry, I did, but it didn't, it didn't work. Dan has worked with us for many years, and he's done an absolutely terrific job. And I'm looking forward to see your work continue because I am seeing so many deer around now. I live in Livingston, and I even see deer on Livingston Avenue, which is a main thoroughfare, and it's a county road. And they're in heavily, in areas that are heavily developed. They're not even in the woods, they're just on the streets. They're all over the place. And I know that when it gets late in the afternoon, I have to be careful driving because that's when I see a lot of them out. So I'm, now, are you going to do work at Hilltop? You mentioned Eagle Rock and South Mountain, and you said Hilltop has a problem. Are you going to do work at Hilltop?
Yes. Hilltop is actually the worst situation in terms of density. The plan calls for six afternoons of hunting at Hilltop. The schedule calls for hunting on Tuesdays in January and February, six afternoons in South Mountain on Tuesdays, and then six afternoons on Thursdays in Hilltop.
So you'll be at all three places?
We will not be in Eagle Rock. We'll be in South Mountain on Tuesdays and Hilltop on Thursdays.
So you're not doing Eagle Rock?
That's correct. The cost of doing it doesn't seem to warrant it yet. The cost of shutting that park down don't quite seem to warrant it based on the numbers. I made a recommendation that it be considered for next year.
The number is not that dense there?
It's getting up there, but there's something about Eagle Rock that, apparently, there are not as many complaints from around there as there are from the South Mountain and Hilltop areas, and particularly around Hilltop. So the thought is to really concentrate efforts to try to knock those two populations down this year, and then perhaps next year to do differently and to go over to Eagle Rock.
Okay, thank you for your answer.
Thank you, Commissioner Sebold. Again, thank you, Dan, for sharing. Let me then move my comments to anyone else on the Administration. Is there anyone else other than the Representative Dan Bernier that wants to share any of their sentiment towards this program? And maybe I can start the discussion. And my feelings were several years ago that this was something that is definitely needed. I can speak firsthand by saying I've seen Mr. Bernier's operation firsthand. I've been there on days and nights of the actual hunt. They are very thorough, they are very safe for any members of the public or residents that feel that, you know, this is going on close to residential neighborhoods. My only concern isn't so much, you know, where we're at and what we need to do, but how long we really have to do it. And I know I've said this on public record before. You know, when you come up with, you know, somewhat of a management plan, you usually have what I call an exit strategy. And I just don't know, you know, again, over the 10 years that I've been here, if we've really even made much headway. You know, I've heard the rumblings and the rumors of, you know, well, now that we cull deer, a lot of the female deer give birth to three fawns instead of one. It's almost like science and nature knows how to continue to build the population when we thin it out. So I'm not saying that I'm supportive or opposed in one way or another of changing what we have going on, Dan, or to the Administration. But I sort of, you know, would like to see where we're kind of going with this, you know, over the next couple of years, if anywhere at all. Or is this like going to be, you know, like a lifelong type of plan? You know, and the only reason I say it is because government, you know, has their hand in a lot of things. And if there's one thing that I wished county government didn't have their hand in, I wish it didn't have their hand in the management of wildlife and deer, for that matter. It just has become quite a controversial issue amongst members of the public. And how can I say it? There's also just a lot of political blowback, so to speak. So, you know, one of the goals that I would like to see, and I've said this, is for somehow us to come up with some kind of feasible, you know, mid-range or long-range plan to know, like, look, we might be supportive of this now, but we're not going to be supportive of it in 10 years from now. You know, and if anyone believes that 10 years is a long time, it's not. Because I remember just yesterday, I was sworn in as a freeholder commissioner, and that was 10 years ago. So that being said, I just, you know, again, I can speak very highly of your operation to my colleagues and to members of the public. But I just was wondering, you know, where we're at as far as where we began, you know, in 2008, you know, where we were last time we had this hunt in 2019, and where we are now currently in 2021, moving into 2022. Is there, is there anything that anyone could share with me to kind of outline that for all of us? Or are there any statistics that we can go over? Like, are we in the same spot as we were in 2008, Dan? Are we worse? I don't know.
No, not at all. I can certainly address all your concerns, Commissioner Luciano. First off, let me address what's typically called the rebound effect theory that you alluded to. There is this thought among people, particularly those who are opposed to hunting, that, as you said, as you reduce the number of deer, the remaining number of deer will be better fed because they have less competition for food, that that will reproduce, that will increase reproductive rates, and then you will have more offspring, and you'll just be back to where you started from. I can refute that in two ways. First off, as you know, the Essex County Deer Management Program is based very heavily on what was done in Union County since 1994. And back in, I would say probably around 2005, there was a study done using data from the deer management hunts conducted in Union County's Watchon Reservation up until that point, looking at reproductive rates from that location. Because as you've seen, we collect, as part of our scientific data gathering process in the check station, we collect numbers on the reproductive rate by looking at the numbers of fetuses and in some cases, the number of corporal lutea, which is a mark on the ovary that indicates past reproductive activity. All of that data was looked at independently by the curator of mammals at the Bronx Zoo. And he came back with a paper that showed there had been no significant increase in the reproductive rate of deer in the Watchon Reservation over that approximately 10-year span. Since that time, we have ourselves looked at the data from the Essex County Parks as we harvest the deer each year. And you've seen my annual report where there's a lot of data provided, and we show what the, what the data is on the deer. How many does are pregnant, how many of those are carrying, how many fetuses? And those numbers have not changed. About 50% of the females in any year are carrying twins. About 7% are carrying triplets. That number has not gone up. So the rebound effect is not valid in the Essex County Parks. As to exit strategy, I very much understand where you're going with that. We were not doing spotlight counting as well back in 2008 as we are now. And certainly, the aerial infrared study is so much more accurate. But what we can easily look at is the numbers of deer that have been removed. In 2008, we removed 213 deer from South Mountain Reservation in just eight and a half days because there were so many more deer there. In 2020, we took out 37. So yes, the numbers are way down, but they're not quite where we need to be. I can't tell you what the density was when we started at South Mountain in Watchon Reservation, which is very comparable. In 1994, it was about 180 per square mile. And, you know, South Mountain is now down at around 25. So, you know, by extrapolation, that is a huge difference. I don't believe we will ever be at a point where where it's done because the deer are not going to stop reproducing. However, as you get closer and finally get down to that 10 per square mile density, their, their numbers will, even with the same rate of reproduction, there won't be so many deer each year. So you could get to a point where you may only need to hunt every second or third year and for only a few days as compared to the more intensive program that you need to have now to get down to that point. And that would be the same across all of the parks. It's going to take longer to get there in Hilltop because that population is so much more dense right now. But South Mountain is very close to where it needs to be.
Thank you, Dan, and again, thank you for the overview. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Sebold, anything that you want to ask or follow up? Okay, I know Commissioner Graham stepped off for a minute. She said she'd be right back. Any other members of the Administration or the Parks Department that would like to speak or have anything they would like to add? Seeing none, note that to the clerk. Clerk, do we have members of the public on this call via virtually or on the telephone that would like three minutes to speak?
I will ask now. Do we have either our Public Information Officer, Charla Malumba, or Lionel Leach, our IT person? Do we have any callers in the queue?
Madam Clerk, at this time, we do not have any callers in queue ready to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lionel, thank you, Madam Clerk. At this rate, or this point of the meeting and the agenda...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, someone just called in.
Okay.
We're allowed to put them in? Just give me a second, please.
Sure, go ahead. And thank you for everyone for being patient and being on this meeting while we're waiting. You know, I think this was very...
Hello, who am I speaking with?
Lionel, please go on mute. Lionel, please go on mute. Chair Luciano, he is vetting the caller.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and again, thank you for everyone for being patient.
The caller will be...
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Chair, Madam Clerk, we have a Susan that is going to be put in queue to speak. She understands that she will have three minutes to speak, and we will be putting her in the queue now. Please state your name for the record, please, and you can begin.
Hi, this is Suzanne Aptman. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I fear that three minutes won't be enough. If it's possible to extend that, if you feel so, that would be great. I do have prepared comments, but after hearing what you all were just talking about, I'm very concerned. And so my first request is that we have a follow-up meeting with a group of scientists, ecologists, that I've been in touch with. Some are from Yale University, who would love to come in and meet with the Administration, Mr. Bernier, Commissioner Luciano, whoever is appropriate, and share a very different perspective on this approach to deer management to our county reservations. An approach that will be more cost-effective, will allow for sustainable solutions over time, that will allow us to really look at what are the goals, what are the assumptions that we've been making, and bring new ideas. Because what I'm hearing in this conversation is the same thing that we hear year after year, where we're focusing on counting deer and then killing deer. And that's the objective, that's the goal. But none of this, none of this proves what our ultimate... But none of this, none of this proves what our ultimate motivation is, from what I understand from when this program began, which is to ensure that our forests are not impaired, that they are regenerating, to ensure that we're managing car collisions, et cetera. The studies that have been done around forest regeneration, the data that has been invited to the county, unfortunately, is inconclusive. You can see that very clearly. It's old data, old science that has not proven to be true because there has not been follow-up measurements. The baseline that was, the benchmark that was initially created no longer exists. It's just incomplete. So we can't at this point in time say that our forests are being, are not regenerating, that they're impaired, and we certainly can't say it's due to deer. Moreover, we can't say that the, we haven't even looked at other variables. There's other variables that could be impacting the forest. Again, we don't know because we haven't done the proper science. We haven't done science that's justifiable. There are things called invasive Asian worms that have been discovered in the forests in New Jersey, and we discovered them in South Mountain. These completely destroy the soil. They create the same kind of damage that a deer is blamed to create. They are there, present right now. We need to get the right scientists in there to look at that because that could be causing impairment. So again, we don't have that science, but I do, I would love to have a follow-up meeting, and that's my request, where we can bring Dr. Schmidt from Yale University, Dr. Veilin. And the other good news is that, is that we have some really great opportunities to look at new solutions. Fertility control, I know you've heard about that for years, and people have said it doesn't work. Just this year, research has been done, finally completed, that shows that over four years, there's a 45% reduction in deer, a 45% reduction in deer. And this is...
Thirty seconds?
Four sites. Towns in New Jersey are looking at this now and trying to bring in these fertility control experts. And guess what? It's going to cost the exact same amount that you spend per deer for killing, $1,000 per deer. And those numbers can be brought down with volunteers. So I have so many really exciting, interesting things to share with you and ways we can look at this, ways we can look at forest regeneration, ways we can think about the deer population...
Please complete your comment.
...that are very different from the way you're thinking about it.
Madam Clerk, I'm just going to ask, I know we stick to three minutes, if we could just give Ms. Aptman another minute to kind of summarize where she's going. We do appreciate her taking the time, and it's not like we have a long lineup of folks after her. So Ms. Aptman, go ahead for another minute or so. Please do, you know, put your comments on the record. And I do want you to know that I hear you loud and clear with the follow-up, and I will request that with the administration if we could get together. I don't see any harm in that, you know, regardless of where we go with their deer management program this year. A meeting of folks, you know, whether it's virtually or in person, you know, is never hurtful. But go ahead, in the next minute, just give us what else you would like to put on record.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. This can be a really great collaborative experience for everyone and lead to better solutions. And now is the right time because we have paused, right? We've paused, for whatever reason, we paused the killing. So it's a perfect time to start research from a clean baseline and try things, you know, again, that might be more publicly acceptable, more cost-effective, lead to long-term solutions. You're able, we're able to now do research from a baseline perspective, look at deer population levels and trends, reproduction, survival rates, and look at all of this from a clean slate. If we, if we throw hunting, killing back into the mix, it will muddy that up. So now is a perfect time to have these discussions and think about how to move forward. Simultaneously, we can do research, and Dr. Schmidt has offered to do this, to look at how we can do better habitat management so that we create unfavorable conditions for deer that are also favorable for humans. We can do that, we just haven't looked into that yet. We can really look at our forest regeneration and see where the issues are. There's tools that we've discovered through our research that will help with car collisions. So we'd like to share that as well. And another thing is yard damage. I know that we hear those complaints. There are opportunities, other counties are looking at public education campaigns, Bergen County is currently looking at that, to educate the public about how they can deter deer from their yards. It will take, it will take some, you know, investment of time and energy. I'm happy to support that work. But with some of these non-lethal methods, we can achieve the results we want to achieve. We just need to be very clear about what the results are we want to achieve, what is the goal, and then, and then explore these other opportunities. Because killing deer, as Mr. Bernier said, will be perpetual, perpetual. It won't lead to the results we want to achieve. And in fact, it will, it could lead to, I understand what he's saying about the rebound effect, but deer, young deer do reproduce at a higher level. And when you kill them, you fill the, you open up a vacuum for more deer to come into play, right? Because we're keeping these deer at such a young age when they're highly fertile. So there's more to the science around reproduction and the risk of killing and how it will lead to more deer. So if we started fertility control this program, sorry, this year, then in 10 years, right, we will look back and say, wow, we, you know, we invested less money over time, we did this in a non-lethal way, and now we have a stable deer herd that the community is satisfied with. I really think the community needs to be more part of these discussions and not just, you know, five or six people who have these discussions over and over.
So thank you, Ms. Aptman, for calling in. Thank you for your advocacy. You have my commitment that I will speak to my colleagues, the administration, and to Mr. Bernier about the possibility of getting something on the books. We do appreciate your participation. That being said, moving along, I do want to ask the clerk, is there anyone else that has called in or any other member of the public that would wish to speak?
Lionel, do we have any other callers in the queue?
At this time, Madam Clerk and Mr. Chairman, we have no further callers.
Thank you, Lionel. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any other member of the Commissioner Board that has any comments or would like to put anything else on the record at this time? Seeing none. I want to thank everyone that's been on this call and for putting it together and for advertising it. Thank you to the administration, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Coulter. Thank you to the Parks Department and to Ms. Hardwick and to Matthew. Thank you, Daniel Bernier. We appreciate that. We, I do want to say that, though, we would like to see some of those black and white numbers from two years ago and from the infrared study. You may have provided some stuff to us a couple of years ago, but it would be very helpful in light of where we may be going to have a refresher for the entire board, if you could provide that to our clerk. And again, to Ms. Aptman, if she's still on the line and listening, I hear you loud and clear. I definitely understand your advocacy. And while we don't necessarily know where things are going to go ultimately this year, I will make a commitment that as the deer committee chair, I will see what I can do to get a scheduled meeting of everyone to get together, regardless of the outcome. I've always believed that, you know, we all have an agreement that we can disagree, and people can feel different ways. And, you know, some folks are the decision-makers that ultimately have to make a decision one way or the other. But why not have open dialogue and educate ourselves and go back and forth and have a healthy discussion every once in a while? So, I mean, this is being paid for by taxpayers. And so you're right, Ms. Aptman, when you say that, you know, taxpayers and residents should weigh in. And I'm not opposed to that, and I don't think anyone on this call would be opposed to that. So at that, I'm going to move to adjourn this meeting. And Loester, is there any other comments or questions from any member of anyone that is on this call? Is there anyone else who would like to raise their hand or anything to say? If not, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. And again, thank you, everybody, for participation. Have a great day.